All right, so, good evening. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for August 10th, 2020. Can I please have a roll call as to who is in attendance?
Cortez is present.
Hughes is present.
Moore is present, and I know Bonin will be late. Are there any appointments that we can give to Tim since he's running late?
Great idea.
Seeing as none. I did want to quickly go over, I do have one announcement this morning. Social media and then driving down through West Street and emails that have come through regarding the whole situation that's going on up at Breezy Acres. To say that it's frustrating is kind of an understatement. It puts all of the boards in an awkward and different position, simply because the localized Board of Health kind of felt confused or staggered as to how they were going to address the issue. The Commonwealth was kind enough to step in and clarify that for us by coming through and basically, first of all, classifying Breezy Acres not as a picnic ground but as a water park. As people know by looking at the governor's rollout as to phases that we're in, water parks are a phase four business. So it made it kind of clear cut and concise, and I know that they're going back and forth. It's one of those things to where this whole COVID mask-wearing, non-mask-wearing thing has become extremely politicized and polarizing throughout the, not just the Commonwealth, but throughout the country. And the long story short, at least on my opinion is, is that John Q. Public or we as individuals have the right to choose to wear a mask or not wear a mask, that's completely up to us. So just like businesses have the right to service you or not service you if you walk in wearing one or not wearing one. But when you become a business and you are servicing the community, there are rules and guidelines that are put in place and they're there for public safety. It's my opinion that the blatant disregard for orders that have come down from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by Breezy Acres is despicable. They're taking their own personal views, thought processes, attempts to continue to maintain revenue, which is what businesses are doing, but that's being done in an unsafe and unfair manner, and it's a horrible disservice to the town, to their business, to the patrons that are visiting that business. And I can go on and on. And like I said, if, there's a chain of command that works throughout government systems. The Board of Selectmen here is the executive branch of government for the Town of Douglas. So other branches that fall underneath us, like other departments where they're funding agency, we kind of give them general ideas and guidelines as to how they need to operate. Much like the Board of Selectmen, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is the executive branch for our town. And when the governor issues an order and says this is how things have to be, as much as we may not like it or may not agree with it, the orders have been sent to us, they're our funding agency, we have an obligation to the Commonwealth to follow through with what they've asked us to do. Long story short, and it's not an agenda item as of yet, but I may bring it back up under item number 11, is that the Board of Selectmen does not have any actual power to do anything to step forward and close Breezy Acres as it pertains to the governor's order. It's not under our purview. What we do have the purview to do is that we, the Board of Selectmen, are highway commissioners. And it's a long way and it's a stretch to go around it, and if a resolution doesn't come up via the Board of Health that is amicable, that is in the letter of the law and following the intent of the law and the phases that have come through from the governor, then I would be of the mindset to propose that the Board of Selectmen close the road before and after Breezy Acres and force them into compliance. That is all that I have for announcements under that. Matt, you had alluded to waiting for Tim to be present for Agenda Item Number One.
Selectmen Bonin requested that we get to that.
Requested that we do that. Seeing as that if the Finance Committee that is in attendance this evening does not have an issue with us moving past one until Selectmen Bonin shows up, I would appreciate that indulgence if you are so inclined.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I would like to, though, if I may, call us to order.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Finance Committee called to order for Monday, August 10th, 2020, and also roll call for Finance Committee. Who do we have present? In-house, I have Phil Landry, present.
Present.
And Dick Hannover, present.
Carol Gogoski, present.
Sandy Typer's present.
Five.
You have Lynn, Heather.
Lynn, are you out there?
Heather Moore.
And Heather.
Lynn was in here too.
Okay, so we have quorum, we'll proceed.
Excellent, thank you, Howard. I will look at.
We'll call the school committee together too?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
I'll call the school committee board together at 7:08. I think we have four.
If you could just do a roll call attendance, please.
Call.
Heather.
Kelly Grady, present.
Heather Moore, present.
Becky Charnia, present.
Lisa Brown, present.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so this brings us into Agenda Item Number Two, which is approve amended RFP for Webster Street lots and possible votes.
And... Mr. Chairman, the Board has already approved the approach here and a lot of the verbiage around the RFP. On Rich Bonin's request, I added the scoring mechanism, so that's the chart, how you will rate the individual proposals when they come in. That has to be detailed with some specificity so people know what they're competing against. That will be part of the bid package. On one of those items, we talked about the character of the town. On another item, we talked about whether or not the bidder is a responsible bidder, so whether or not they have the reputation and the financial wherewithal to be a good partner in developing the property. I've added to that that they must present the firm resume and qualifications of any engineering firm or project management firm that they are going to use for the project. What we've learned time after time after time is that a well-organized professional operation, filings are complete, timely, their responses back and forth to the town are crisp and responsive, and that makes a project go. If they're not organized, if they're not aware of or experienced with Massachusetts stormwater regulations or any such thing, then site plan review in front of the planning board turns into month after month after month of amendments and refilings, and it just becomes really difficult. One of the things that we want is a project to happen quickly. So that kind of delay is what we're trying to avoid. So I added that, and other than that, the remainder of it is the same except for the dates. So I would anticipate, because I have to put this in the central register for 30 days, that we would get to this sale process in September.
Okay.
All right. I still need your, I would rather, the town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to manage this process, so I think I'd rather have you approve the RFP rather than me just do it.
Okay. You have a question, Pam?
I thought that we had a nice sound system installed in this room?
We did.
I'm having a hard time hearing that.
Are the, these on?
Maybe I just need to get closer, is this better, Pam?
Is it on?
Is this better? From closer to the mic?
It feels like you're just talking straight to the oven and there's no sound.
That's, this mic works, yeah. Test it. Yeah, the mic's working. I'm wondering if we got a speaker out back there.
Well, I didn't just hear the tapping pretty well, but Matt's voice is carrying.
Well, sometimes I'm told that we're too close to the mics, but I'll get closer, maybe it'll be, yeah, all right.
There it is. I'm lucky, my voice carries.
Yeah, well, we don't usually have an audience, Pam, so we're not usually too worried about it.
Yeah, I want to go on record saying it's nice to actually see people in the room.
Exactly.
It's been sorely missed. To put it like, I mean, we can just say, make a motion based off as presented?
I have one brief question.
Absolutely.
For the town administrator. You and I had spoken briefly about the disclosures, and I know they're extensive, at least in one person's opinion. We ran this by town council, correct?
Yes, so Rich did approve this RFP. So for folks to know what we're talking about, in the section of the RFP, we discuss some of the material conditions that exist with the property. You know, it's grade, but we also reveal that there are plans that were engineered in the past that identified a building envelope. We're just trying to push people towards, you know, knowing where they can build and where they can't build on these nine acres.
Okay.
I think it protects us. So we're not going to get into the middle of it, well, we couldn't, we can't do it now because you didn't tell us there was a rock over there. Well, no, there's a rock over there, you know, taken into consideration when you bid.
Right.
But the appraiser saw all those disclosures and factored them in to his appraisal, so that, that number is...
The material to the number then is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Does that satisfy your questions?
It does.
Mr. Hughes, you have any questions?
I do not.
Anybody care to make a motion on this?
I would move that we approve the RFP as revised.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Cortez, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Moore's aye. All right, seeing as still no Tim, we will move on to Item Number Three, which is to declare 17.7 acres of land in between Northeast Maine and land on Gilboa Streets available for disposition and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, this is one of several warrant articles that are emerging from a project, the proponent of which is likely to make a presentation to you on August 18th about what they have in mind. The biggest piece of property over there is McIntyre's loan operation on Northeast Maine. Right next to it is a plot of town land that was taken in exchange for tax settlement many, many, many years ago, about 70 years ago, and has sat there landlocked, idle and unused, but still in the name of the Town of Douglas for that entire period. To the rear of that property, so the entire shoreline of that pond, some people call it Nap Pond, some people call it Gilboa Pond, but it's right in front of the mill, including the parking lot with its easement and everything else, that was all taken for taxes only a couple of years ago. But the town now owns the entire shoreline around that pond, including the dam, but also including some, some open space on the other side, so the Northeast Maine side of it. The project proponent needs to unify these three holdings in order to have the site that they wish to have for the proposal that they have. One of the parcels provides access, the other provides buildable space. Following Chapter 30B, Section 16, for the disposition of real property, the Board of Selectmen must declare it available for disposition. You do have active supervision, so it's you, not School Committee, not Water, not anybody else, the Board of Selectmen. And if you are going to restrict the terms of the sale, you must vote that at the same time that you vote it's available for disposition. That entire package must then go to town meeting, and I guess the intervening step is that FinCom would have an opportunity to opine in its review of the articles in the warrant, but only town meeting can authorize the sale of an interest in real property. So it ultimately won't be decided here, it'll be decided by town meeting. Time is of the essence because there's work to do if this property were approved to be sold by town meeting. We would have to do another appraisal, and because of the size of the lot, we would have to advertise for 30 days in the central register.
Okay. So that's just based off of sort of this proposed article in here, right?
Yeah. As to the restriction, pardon me, I think there's suggested language there, to restrict it to sale for some suitor that wishes to do some kind of project. The notion, why sell it? It doesn't have any value if there isn't somebody making an aggregation. So that's, that's the thought process around the restriction. But that has to be voted, as I said.
So it almost sounds like it would be the way the proposed warrant article is written, right?
Yeah.
So, if you want, I can read the article in, so we've got it on record. So on the article would be to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer the real property shown as Lot 1 on the Town of Douglas Tax Assessor's Map 139 in its entirety and approximately 8.5 acre portion of the real property shown as Lot 44 on the Tax Assessor's Map 138 for the purposes of economic development, and that the Chief Procurement Officer be required to put these assets out for public bidding in accordance with the procedure specified in Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, for the disposal of an interest in real property or act in relation thereto. Yep. Sure.
What is the economic development project that is being thought of for this area? I'm of the understanding that, that there is something that we are very close to, and I think that the townspeople deserve to know what it is.
Yeah, as I said, I mean, on August 18th, there'll be a full presentation from the project proponent. I had to really get nervous getting too close to private interests when, when they're asking that you, I mean, obviously they're going to build a building or, but it's the way zoning is, they're going to build a building with associated parking that would occupy all of this space.
What's the easy to, and we're not trying to be evasive, Pam.
Oh, we're just trying not to, you know...
They're coming in, you said, on the 18th?
Yeah.
To actually do a full presentation?
Yeah.
So a reputable builder in, within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a proposed building or structure that he would like to put onto this land, and full details will be disclosed by said builder on our August 18th meeting. So I think that's kind of where he wanted us to leave it until he was sitting in front of us, if that helps. I know it's vague, but...
But just a second question, if you don't mind, or a comment, maybe?
Yeah.
We've had a couple of conversations in the last few days, and I think, I think the townspeople would appreciate the Board of Selectmen or the Administrator's Office of Douglas to send a press notice to the Worcester Telegram and perhaps to the La Charn Valley Tribune notifying residents of Douglas about this public meeting, and also ask the town clerk, if she put on one of our boards, we've got a couple of them, one is fire station, one is portable, on notifying people of this very important meeting.
We can do that.
No, I agree, that's...
Yeah.
And we've asked the proponent to actually sit down with, with cable and do the presentation for, presentation on the town's cable channel to be repeated, so you don't have to watch the whole Board of Selectmen meeting, you can just tune into that. Because it's up to them to advocate for what they want to try to do and persuade people because this is going to town meeting in September. So August 18th was a, we couldn't get him here tonight, there was too much on your agenda already, but he wasn't prepared to really do the job that he wants to do on it. So I think a lot of questions will be answered that night. I pretty much shared everything I know. I know more about what the town has to do to try to make this work than I do the actual project.
All right.
I just know it's a, it's a building.
Well, I know, could we ask that we send a press notice to the TNG and...
Oh, yeah, no, I mean...
In the Tribune?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I mean, we'll...
Yep.
We'll put that out there. We want more people to participate, not less.
And I will put it up on social media as well. Does that help, Pam?
It does. I do think that August 18th and the town meeting is on September 12th, I believe. That's a little bit short.
With a proposal...
This must have been in the works for a number of months.
The problem was, is it has been, there's been discussions, but nothing that we could really bring forward as tangible. One of the criticisms that we had run into prior to when we did economic development opportunities is that we came to the town really quick with it, and then it fell apart, and then they're like, well, it's another pipe dream. So it's trying to balance those or manage those expectations to where it's a real opportunity before we actually bring it and sit down and say, here's the full presentation.
I just want to remind the board, the current board, that the Town of Douglas, since I've been involved, has had a dump proposed on Webster Road.
Mm-hmm.
That went way far. I mean, it almost happened. People didn't want it.
Yeah.
We've had other things proposed, I think at Airport, then became...
An amusement park?
In Barrowville, a neighboring...
Yeah, an amusement park, I remember that.
Was it Peanagier or...
Pretty familiar, Rhode Island.
That's correct.
They were doing, they were talking about power plants, et cetera. So the town has been in the center, based on where we are and the amount of land that we have, and that it's rural, it's low population relatively to Boston, et cetera, we're very weary of what's going on, and it really should be commensurate on the board and the administrator to take that into consideration when coming up with proposals and involve more people in the town with this kind of stuff.
Well, I understand and appreciate the position that you're taking, Pam. And, you know, like I said, it's one of those things that we do have to balance it carefully because the last thing that the board wants to do is bring forward a, like, a false promise of a potential, you know, a potential business coming in for revenue. The fundamental problem that I've seen sitting on the board since I've been here is I have seen multiple opportunities come into the town, and then I hear the criticism that comes from the residents of Douglas of, we need more business, we need more business, just not that business. And, you know what I mean, I understand that...
Did you want a dump? Excuse me, did you want a dump?
I'll be candid, Pam, anything that's going to generate a decent amount, enough of revenue for the town without depreciating property values, yes, I'd look at. I'd look at seriously because we can't continue to survive on 98, 98% of our revenue being on just taxpayers. And the, and the understanding unwillingness of anybody that wants to do another two and a half override where it took 20-plus years to actually get one done to at least true us up, we have to look at any and every opportunity that comes in that can generate viable revenue for this town, and then weigh that out based off of, is it going to hurt the town, is it not going to hurt the town? But what everybody needs to accept and understand is that the Douglas of 30 years ago, it's changing, and there's nothing any of us can really do to stop that. There's more people moving in, there's a requirement for more services, there's a bigger requirement that sits on the school. Things grow, evolution happens, and people have to, as much as everybody likes nostalgia, just kind of let it go a little bit. We can keep our small-town feel, but we need to look at every opportunity for revenue. We have to. It's irresponsible if we don't.
I'd add to the chairman's statement too, that we're going to have at least, or the public, I should say, is going to have at least two cracks at this, Pam. We're going to have the meeting next week, the 18th, and then it's going to be on the town meeting warrant, so that the public is going to see it, in addition to what town administrator pointed out about putting it on cable, they're going to see it at our meeting next week, and they're going to see it again at town meeting in September.
Now I really do need to say something. Don't mind.
He's in, he's in charge, ask him.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I clarify?
Sure.
My concerns.
Absolutely.
I absolutely agree that the town needs to look at things and that they need to be brought in. One of the other problems doing it with such short notice, and I stand on that short notice, is that you're not getting enough people to buy in. So here's a scenario I want you to consider. You're giving the presentation the 18th, you're bringing it to town meeting on the 12th, the town votes it down. Then what?
Well, it would probably fall under being another missed opportunity.
Well...
Pam, here's the long and the short of it, and I'll be perfectly square. I could have started talking to this town about it a year and a half ago. There is a core contingent of people that actually do decide to show up to town meeting that actually will weigh in and vote. There's, what, 8,500 residents? I've never seen a town meeting over 300 people. That's pathetic. That's people that just do not wish to engage and be part of the solution of their town. So if it turns out and it goes to town meeting and the maybe 120 people that actually decide to get themselves out of bed and roll on down to the high school and show up and vote decide that that's not the answer for them, then this board can't help them. The Economic Development Committee can't help them, and we will sit here fixed in time forever, and it will just be the same small little Douglas until we have to continue to start cutting services again. Because that two and a half override's not going to last forever, and there is no way in hell I can get another one passed for another 20 years. Because the, the community spoke loud and clear. You're going to get this one, don't expect it again. And I most certainly don't. So, but I'm not going to fall into the, well, geez, it's short notice. The Economic Development Committee was doing things that there were, there were several things that needed to fall into place before that idea was even viable, and unfortunately, it fell under short time. So people can either look at the project as a whole and say, is this going to be better for our town? What does the revenue dollars and impact mean for Douglas? Yes or no? And if they say, no, we don't want it, then I can tell you how I'll feel on it as chairman. I'll say, well, it's another opportunity that a business came to Douglas. When the residents have yelled and screamed at me that they want business, just not that business. So I'd like for the people that do choose to vote no, if they do, tell me what kind of business you do want so I can turn the Economic Development Committee loose and try and solicit them. Now, I'm not trying to sound flippant or snarky or anything else, it's just, the person that was looking at doing the project had asked that this did not go to an overly large public forum and draw a ton of attention to it because it was uncertain, and it potentially put his candidate that's coming in to look at the facility that he's building at risk. So we have to respect the person that's coming in and trying to do business with us. And I apologize if it's short notice, and I would again encourage everybody, go to town meeting, it's the purest form of democracy you will ever see in your life, and be part of the solution. Or don't go to town meeting, people that don't want it, don't vote for it, and continue to be part of the problem. There's not much else I can do on it.
Have you voted yet?
No.
No.
So, I just want to draw your attention, in Item Number Three, there's actually your resolution, not the article. So on the back page, so there's findings of fact, and then your restrictions in the therefore section. That's what, that's the form that...
We need to read in?
We need to read in. You know, I don't know if you need to read it in, but that's what you need to vote.
All right, you want, I made the motion, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'll withdraw the motion.
I'll read this.
Withdraw the second, I'll do it if you want.
Please.
Who's seconded? Mike?
Yes. Mike, take your second back.
I withdraw my motion.
I read, send my second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen declare the above-described property, real property, available for disposition, and that the Board request authorization from town meeting to sell the property in accordance with the procedure for the disposition of interest in real property found at Mass. General Law's Chapter 30B, Section 16, and that the Board shall restrict any sale of the described real estate to bidder bidders that intend to develop them for economic development purposes within two years of signing a purchase and sales agreement with the Board.
Motion has been made.
Select, move.
Yeah, and seconded.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just respond to some of Mrs. Holmes's comments.
Absolutely.
I, economic development is hard because sometimes opportunities will come up with the timeframe associated with them. And this party in interest has been looking around in Douglas, thought they had a suitable property on Davis Street, it didn't pan out, and that whole effort got a little bit of, ahead of itself, got over its skis, if you will, trying to put things on the town meeting and move things along to reassure the developer that the town would at least consider taking steps to making things easier for them. The number one test that anybody in economic development should apply is whether or not the parties in interest have skin in the game. Have they exchanged either a letter of intent or a purchase and sales agreement on a piece of property? And/or is there an app... And/or is there an application for site plan review that has been submitted to the planning board? Or if zoning relief is needed, has the zoning board received an application? At that point, the party in interest has taken a substantial step towards actually doing the project. Up until that point, all you have is words and pretty pictures and little squares drawn on lots. And that doesn't count for macaroni and cheese. It doesn't matter at all what people talk about. It doesn't matter until they actually take proactive steps to do the project. And we've only recently arrived at that stage, to the point where we had enough time to put together a piece of paper for town meeting to get it done on time. So we're coping with imperfect circumstances. The other thing is, I will, I'm a little bit more restrictive in the way I deal with people when they come in here. If they come in here and they say, we want a dump, I say goodbye because what we need are projects that people might consider actually supporting. And the town has made itself very clear, I think, from its past history, that there are types of things that they simply won't support. And if you know that, it's foolhardy to chase after those ideas. It would also be foolhardy to look sideways at a project that's very much in the mainstream of what's going on in this part of the world right now. Up and down our highways, all over the northeast and all over the country, especially given the way we're responding to the pandemic. I don't really think I have to say much more. I think people can see in between my words the kind of development I'm talking about. So, yeah, I'm not real excited about, you know, huge facilities for storing gas or any such silly thing. I just don't want to go to the public with our first real strong economic development proposal being something that would be abhorrent. So we're just not doing that. I just want to give some people some reassurances and it's, in a week's time, you'll have opportunity to ask a lot of questions because once that man sits in front of a microphone, he's fair game.
Okay.
Did you win?
Yes, Douglas beat Sutton eight to seven.
Yes. Couldn't beat a better opponent.
It was a very good game. The boys played very well, very proud of them.
We can call it a day now.
Where are we in this? And I apologize for being late.
Item number three.
Item number three.
Okay.
But we have nominated you to like eight new committees.
Never doubt.
We actually have a motion to dispose, well, basically, giving an author, well, to put a warrant article to dispose of real property.
If you look at the last page in item number three, now therefore, everything after that was my motion, word for word.
And it has been made and seconded. And we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion?
We have Mr. Davis on board too, Mr. Chairman.
Hal!
I'm here.
Good to see you, Hal.
All right. So as there is no additional discussion, can I please have a roll call vote?
Bon and Epstein.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Moore, aye. All right. So now, welcome, Tim. We can go to agenda item number one, which is a joint budget discussion with the Finance Committee and possible votes, including the Town Administrator's summary presentation for revised FY21 budget, Fire Chief Kent Vincent's presentation regarding Fire and Ambulance Department reorganization, and the Town Administrator reading legal counsel opinion and appointment of non-union management positions in public safety departments. So, as we have, the Finance Committee has already been called to order. I believe we have the School Committee also in attendance that they're in, have been called to order as well. I'll kick it over to the first budget item, which is the Town Administrator's summary presentation of revised FY21 budget.
Would anybody like a hard copy? I have nine of them.
I would take one, yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Your man. Can you try to hand it out to anybody? Okay, anybody else?
Yes, please.
Would you like a copy, Pam? Okay.
Everybody want a hard copy?
I'm familiar with the soft copy, so.
You're familiar with the soft copy, excellent. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of FinCom, members of the School Committee, Mr. Superintendent, I see you're on there too. We have finally gotten to the point where we can present a budget that's based upon valid revenue assumptions or assurances from various parties. The budget and financial town meeting were delayed in an abundance of prudence to prevent the absurd situation where we were trying to build a budget not knowing how much revenue the state would provide to us in state aid. The state itself has taken a number of interesting steps based upon their own uncertainties. So they've passed a budget that's only valid through October. They've opened up a lending facility. So in other words, the executive has been given the authority to go borrow to cover some costs. And the ongoing discussion at the state level of their revenue shortfall is very concerning, and it should be to every Massachusetts resident. Our state government is far, far short. We are, in the last quarter, the state's economy shrank by 44%. The country was 25%, Commonwealth was 44%. So that led to the view that any scenario about the budget for fiscal '21 would probably include cuts to local aid. Last weekend, not this most recent weekend passed, but the weekend before, just before we all went home for the weekend, the news came out of the State House that the legislature, and I believe the executive, had agreed in principle, and they are putting it out there in public, that they would not reduce either Chapter 70 or unrestricted general government assistance, so-called UGA. Those were the two major revenue categories that we weren't sure about. In order to preserve the town's financial options, we built a budget that was based on a forecast of significant cuts to UGA of 50% and a 4% reduction in Chapter 70. The notion being that if we were going to cut that much out of the budget, we needed to get our act together, have a program for cuts that the Board of Selectmen reviewed, prioritized, and directed me to follow so the budget would balance, even if we had to use free cash to balance the budget, without major, major service reductions because of its unknown duration of this economic downturn coming from the pandemic. Once the state came back and provided assurances that the revenue would be there, it opened up the question of whether or not the budget should stay in that condition with all the cuts in it, or should certain restorations be made based upon the feedback from department heads and my own view as Town Administrator? Since, once I present the budget, it's not mine anymore. This is yours for about an hour and it goes to FinCom, it's really their, their issue. But what I want to give FinCom and town meeting is a, is a product that's been thought about extensively and the options have been parsed out. There's a couple of things I've already done, because we're in the fiscal year, that are irreversible. There's a couple of people who've decided to go to part-time, retire, and we're going to reconfigure that department to actually, in my opinion, enhance the level of services provided there, but we're going to do so with less people. But the open question became, how many of the cuts that were required by the Board of Selectmen in the last draft of the budget are still necessary? My leading restoration recommendation in terms of the largest amount of dollars would be to put some money back into the school budget. The original budget that we were working on before COVID was a 2% increase year-over-year to the, the bottom line of that budget. As part of the cost savings initiatives, we reduced that to 1%. My recommendation is to bring it back to 1 and 1/2. The theory being that I don't want to send the school department into making significant cuts that will be difficult to recover from, and at the same time, we have to be positioned for fiscal '22, which may not be any better than we thought fiscal '21 was going to be. So we need to keep our powder dry as much as we can, but still give them enough programmatic All of the projected cuts in Chapter 70 would have only accrued to the school side of the account because they're the ones who use it. So when those cuts didn't materialize, we should at least give them back in the budget what we don't think is going to get taken out by a revenue cut from the state. That has the largest dollar impact. The next would be whether or not we would provide a cost of living adjustment for the unions and non-union employees as they negotiated in their contracts. The non-union employees typically follow our union people. My recommendation to the Board and to FinCom is this. Goodwill and good faith at the negotiating table is hard to come by. And I have worked in jurisdictions where it has not existed at all. So every single thing you said to the other side was challenged and caused, you know, many, many meetings and back and forth, and why don't we write all this down in a 50,000-page document? You know, if somebody, you know, sneezes the wrong way, there'll be a grievance. We don't have that kind of relationship with our collective bargaining units here. We went to them when we thought we were going to be in severe fiscal stress and asked them for a sacrifice. They had one meeting with their membership and they came back with a written document that said they would do that.
To be clear, that was police and fire?
Police and fire.
What did the teachers do?
The teachers agreed to it on their side.
Okay.
They actually agreed first. My thought is, we should only ask for it when we need it. And if we don't need it, we shouldn't run to the bank with a letter that says, you promised, you said you didn't want it, and then get into all kinds of back and forth about, well, making that up and it's a future date and all the rest of it. We'll take fiscal '22 as it comes. But fiscal '21, if we have the ability to make those changes, we would make those changes. Part of the other problem that I have as your Personnel Director is, this was, remember, this was a close issue, whether or not we provide employees who are eligible for a step with the step and take the COLA away from everybody, including all the top-step employees who've been the most loyal people we've had, because many of them have been here 15, 20 years. The COLA is the only adjustment they receive. So when you take away the COLA and you leave the steps, there's a controversy there, where it causes a morale issue. And when people worked through the pandemic, sometimes extra hours that they're not compensated for, to be of assistance as we responded, I think that there's, there's a step of good faith on their part, that their loyalty to the town is without question, and the service level is extraordinary. So that's where I, those are the two biggest recommendations in terms of money. What would I keep? I would keep leaving the police lieutenant position vacant for six months. I would keep the expense reduction, so in the expense budget across all departments that had expenses over $2,500, they get a 2.5% reduction. I kept, even though I didn't, in the end, didn't hit the number in community development, I would keep the reorganization because it's largely already happened. Those are the, the highlights of this, of this budget. What is it yield all in? The budget is in the black. So there's about a $70,000 closing balance to the positive after we run all the numbers in terms of revenue and expenditures. No adjustments were made to local receipts. Those are driven by the economy. The economy is still going to be poor, so excise tax estimate, the estimate of new growth, all reduced significantly to take into consideration the fact that we are headed into a downturn.
What was the utilization of free cash?
Zero. So we went from needing pretty much $400,000 of free cash to make up for a revenue shortfall. We don't need to do that. We are, our current game plan is to not ask the town for capital until at least November because we still have a lot of uncertainty. We want to hold the free cash available as a resource if fiscal '22 turns into a real mess. Now, what has come out, here's the challenge of trying to do a budget and be transparent at the same time it's a moving target, right? We've had any number of things developed that had to be accommodated in this document as it changed and as the landscape changed because we know a lot more in September than we did in May. One of the things we know is that we've had any number of people pursue opportunities at other fire departments other than ours. So it created a pool of vacancies that gave the chief the opportunity to consider how he's organized and whether or not he's comfortable with the way he's organized. And this is the big dramatic segue, chief, to your presentation. I'm going to give up the chair so that you can see everybody and I'll sit and listen.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think it was, it seems like centuries ago that I presented my budget to you. I think I might have been late December, maybe early January. And if I could just like rewind the tape in your minds, I remember presenting, I always had an open spot for a paramedic, and that I hadn't asked for it, I knew it wasn't going to happen, and that became somewhat of a conversation. And so eight months later, a lot has happened. And some of it, it's caused me to reevaluate a lot of things with all that's happened. Early, actually, just as we were ramping up for COVID in mid-March, before Governor Baker pulled the trigger on schools and we were out, we were ramping up, we were starting to meet his emergency operations center on a daily basis, not really knowing what was, what was going to happen. And lo and behold, about a week and a half into it, I was put on my back for a couple weeks. And actually, in an eight-hour shift, it was a, Sunday morning, I had a paramedic who was coming in, called out sick. I think I've got a fever. So, in eight hours, we lost five guys. So for, so for, I'll put my mask on too, so. So for.
It's contagious.
What's that?
Putting a mask on, it's contagious.
Yeah. So, so in, in about five hours, six hours, we lost five of our members. And when we only have seven full-timers, that puts a real bite in your, in your, in your staffing level. So, and when we do 24-hour shifts and three a week, some, some of them do the three and then the, the following week they do too. So we were hit pretty hard, staffing-wise, to the point where I had reached out to the district, or we had reached out to the district, and what was interesting was, I've always touted the Fire Chief District for the, for District Seven, and so I was trying to be a little bit of a visionary and say, hey, we have strike teams for ambulances, this could get ugly, so what's the plan here? Because we put these together a few years ago. Well, come to find out, everyone just sort of got there in the headlights, looked and said, well, utilize your, your immediate mutual aid. To which my response was, what if they're hit as hot as we are? Now what? So needless to say, I wasn't too happy. But in any event, I was sick and my deputy got sick. And when, when, now, the deputy, when I was out, now he's second-in-command, but he's always still the highway superintendent, and so he gets sick. So now I have a call captain who's never been in a command role before really to speak of. Did an awesome job, I can't say enough about it, but, and then he's also subbing in for the highway superintendent, and he's also in charge of all the school, all the, all the buildings here in town. So now he's the emergency manager in the operations center every day.
As much as I hate to bug you, chief, I think the mask is actually impairing your use of the microphone.
All right.
No disrespect. If you want to keep it on, you can, but.
It's fine. So anyway, so when we lost the deputy chief, it's like losing two.
Right.
Because you're losing a highway super and you're, so, so that was a wake-up call because we, we had guys working 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, 24. because we had guys working 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, 24, and they just, they just kept doing it. And in the meantime, we're trying to grapple with the PPE issue and things like that. So it was ugly. So that caused me to think about the situation here in town and the safety aspect for not only the firefighters, but the community as well. And we started staffing a second ambulance because we had no idea where it was going. And then about a month ago, and this is about when I really started thinking about this, I was just coming back from vacation on a Tuesday morning, we got hit with a crash on Main Street of a car, a small SUV, that hit a tanker truck full of gasoline head-on. And it was just myself and my deputy. Ambulance was already out, was in Milford. I hadn't known that at the point, at that point. I know they'd gone out, but I thought maybe they got a refusal because the dispatcher had called the on-duty EMS, so I thought maybe they were back. Well, not, not so. So en route to the scene, it was already, I was already getting phone calls and I was already getting information that it was pretty bad, and I heard the deputy sign on. So he got to the scene and I was coming up, and I normally go right to the cruiser with my scene, the scene with my cruiser, rather.
Excuse me one second.
Oh, you got it, Matt?
Thanks, go ahead, sorry.
But as I'm coming up over the hill, I heard, I heard the deputy sign off and say, "Do me a favor, put life light in the air." And so I figured now's the time, I'm going to call him on the radio because nobody had signed on, I am responding at that difficult time of morning when people are already off, on their way to work and stuff. So I basically called John on the radio and said, "I'm heading by the station, do you need me to get the engine?" "Yes, I need the engine, I need the jaws of life." "Okay." So I stopped. But the bottom line was, all said and done, the patient got packaged, he was pulled from the wreckage, the car was on fire, I had, I pumped the engine, so that meant there was no incident commander. And it also meant that I had to reach back into the cobwebs a little bit because, you know, that's not something I do every day now. So anyway, we got him off, but it was hairy and it told me, "Listen, we're, we can't run this way. We're dodging bullets here, and if you're in gunfire, eventually you're going to get hit." And that means the town and it means the people we serve, most importantly. So I had started to talk to the administrator about it and about possibly doing, doing a posting for an assistant chief, which is a, is a command staff, another layer. In other words, we're not going to put it onto a call captain to be an incident commander and have to run a whole fire department because the two top, top chief officers are down. And it also would put another person in the station during the day so that we could get that second ambulance out at that, at least 10 or 12 hours a day. So I started to talk to Matt about it and I pulled out the ambulance, what we're charging per call, and I started to tally things up. Most of our calls are in ALS2 where we do an IV, a monitor, and that generally is around a $2,000 bill plus mileage. And I average 15 because 15 is, it's a low end, but it accounts for when you go to Milford, it accounts for when you go to Hubbard, and it also underestimates when you go to UMass or whatever. So I figured, rough numbers, but I figured about, and I did pass out, I'm going to pass this out over here. These are our ambulance rates, I sent that around to you folks.
Could I have one?
Yep.
Do you need a copy, Pam? Would you like a copy?
So I went through and I looked at the last year's report as far as the annual report, and there were 67, 67 times that another ambulance service, because we were busy, had to come out and transport or go to one of our calls. So if I just took a BLS rate, that's the, you know, it's not IVs and things like that, I figured that we were leaving on the table approximately $105,300. The mid-rate, which is most of them, I'm leaving $125,011 on the table. And ALS2 is when you have, when you get two medicines. I believe in 150,000, so 151,000. That's just straight billing, that's not including any of the mileage. So if I did mileage for those calls, that many calls, it comes out to about $35,000. So you're looking at almost $180,000, or if you went mid-range, $155,000 you're leaving on the table. So it's a revenue thing, but it's also a safety thing. We're leaving money on the table because we're not billing for those ambulance calls, and the person who's getting an ambulance from that, from a town that's further away is waiting longer because it's taking longer for the ambulance to get there. Just as an example, two months ago, about 11 o'clock in the morning, we did a unresponsive male on, on a roof, he was roofing, and we got there, he was cardiac arrest. We had plenty of people in the station, a man is alive and walked, is in walking today because he got the right amount of equipment and the right people and the right stuff in the right place at the right time. It was about, it was right around, right around Memorial Day. But I use that as an example because we need to be more consistent. And I feel that that type of a position, that person, if they came onboard, would have to be a paramedic, but they'd also be involved in more higher-level decision-making and could easily take over the reins if I was on vacation. I'm like, this year I hit six weeks vacation and I rolled two over from last year that I haven't taken yet. So that's, that's a significant amount of time that you have to put someone in that position. But those are just some of the thoughts that I had and I have, be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, the two, the two major things, I feel, as a chief, I'm playing, I'm spread pretty thin. I'm playing whack-a-mole. You got one problem here, you figure it out, and you got two more to pop up over here. Some things that I would expect that that person to do would obviously be, in my absence, take over operations during the day, get more aggressive with our inspection program. COVID put us way behind the eight ball because we weren't able to go do a lot of inspections because of masks and people didn't want you in their, their homes and things. More opportunity to do grants. Things like this economic thing, if this, if this goes off, that's going to be a huge undertaking alone, just in inspections and planning and making sure it's done right, that the right-sized water lines are put in and things like that. Obviously, ambulance calls, overseeing QA, QI. QA, QI is, every ambulance call we do is documented, but when we're done, we have people above the medics that, who have written those, who have written those, done those calls. We go back and make sure if they're following all the right protocols or what was, what might have been done in a situation or not done, that could have been done. That's all stuff that the state expects us to do and report it back to them.
Chief, who does that? You?
I do some of it, but my EMS coordinator does some as well. But once again, you can't be looking at and doing your own QA, QI, it has to be done by another person who's unbiased, obviously. Obviously, a safety, a structure fires would have to be a safety officer and operations officer, know the incident command structure that we deal with. Assistant disciplinary issues, if I have any disciplinary, disciplinary issues, immediately I have to call John, get John to come over from Highway, be in the deputy, sit down. And a lot of them, you don't solve them in 10 minutes. They might be repeated meetings. So it's just the way it is. And then, and then going unsaid, it's not unsaid, but this pandemic is, we have no idea where it's going. We're dealing with Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency and getting PPE. Thankfully, we squirreled away enough PPE, we had the foresight to do that, so we didn't run real short, we were able to do that. We just received a grant, I wrote a grant a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago for the assistance to firefighters grant, and we got awarded that grant. So we'll be getting PPE there and then Mima stepping up and giving us to them. But those are just some of the things that this person would be assisting with. So be happy to answer any questions or if Matt has anything to add.
When you said you were leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table, are you saying that?
Excuse me, I can't hear.
Okay. So you're saying you left a hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table, is that the mutual aid services are taking those monies?
That was, that's correct. Those, we had a total of 67 mutual aid calls where ambulances came in last year. And part of that was we were down an ambulance, but it's also the fact that we don't have the staffing during the day if another call comes in to be able to, to be able to handle that call and have the appropriate level of staff.
Not just on the revenue side, Tim, though, as you look at the response time. So I mean, I've had the ambulance service at my house a few times when my wife was going through some medical issues, and the average response time was like anywhere from three to five minutes tops. If you have to ask for somebody from Northbridge or from another town, one of our mutual aid towns to come through, your response time is going to be anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes. And if that's a cardiac event, they're gone. So in the tanker issue that the chief was talking about earlier, I was actually one of the first people on the scene at that accident because I was taking my wife to her infusion therapy. And I found it extremely odd that that accident was probably minutes old when I pulled up on it, but it was extremely rare for Douglas not to have, like, at least hear sirens coming as soon as you see that the accident's there and to actually start calling in to our first responders and it had just barely been toned out. Our ambulance wasn't in town, and I think I was there a good five or six minutes before the police even showed up.
That we were running two ambulances.
We have two ambulances, but we're not always able to get two ambulances out the door. With, most of the time, we have two people on during the day, we have two groups of two, one group of three. And quite honestly, we're in the process of filling three of those slots right now.
This is the first I'm hearing of, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, but as a small fire department, the lifeblood of it had been the call fighters. Why not amp up, incentivize the call fighters to play a more active role?
Very few of the call fighters are paramedics and don't have that level of training or that type of time to commit. I do have probably two going into the academy in, in October. Even that was pushed off, now a lot of it's virtual. So we were waiting to see what was going to actually happen with that, but.
I think a call department is probably better served for fire, but I think that the amount of times that we send ambulance versus a fire truck is significantly skewed. Your call department have full-time jobs everywhere else, so.
Can you speak up, please? You're really mumbling and I can't hear you. And I'm sitting in the same room. Get them!
Is this better?
Don't call!
So my point was, is that, and I'll ask the chief to validate this, is that the calls that come into our fire department are significantly more of a medical nature than they are of a fire nature. Is that a true statement?
I would say, yeah. I'd say it's 80/20 or 70/30. And I would, Dave, you've been in public safety, you know.
I would say that's the norm, yeah.
So the nature of a call fire department is these guys have regular full-time jobs because you really can't run a household budget based as of, "I'm a call firefighter." So if you're trying to get a call guy to come in from his home, if he's a work-at-home person, then hop into an ambulance and then take the ambulance out to a medical call, it's no different than calling into Northbridge or Sutton or another town that has an ambulance service. So the only way that you actually get true and effective, like, medics that are going to show up at your house is if they're sitting in the station and prepared to respond. Because you still have to accommodate whatever their drive time is from their home to the station, then their time to get ready, fire up the ambulance, make sure they've got everything that they need, and then go out and deal with the scene. Am I wrong on that?
No, you're absolutely right.
I would add on to what the chief said, the higher you go in the level of expertise from firefighter, and if I'm getting the terms wrong, jump right in, to medic, to paramedic in those terms, more training and more in-service training every year. And I think that presents a burden for someone who's a part-time employee and didn't plan on really putting that amount of time into the position. I know that as you, as you climb that ladder of expertise, there is more technical knowledge, and it changes every year. Think if you take, it's something as simple as a CPR course. How many times in our lifetime have they changed CPR? And I know that's a very, very basic comparison to make, but I think we want the people that show up to our medical calls, especially our more specialized medical calls, to have the highest level of training. And I think that's something that's a little difficult to maintain with part-time call people.
And unfortunately, you have people for a small town like us, they're using us as a stepping stone, and then they get to another department that in their opinion has a better schedule to them, you know, "Sorry, chief, I'm going to this department."
All right. And I'm taking my training with me, thank you.
Exactly. And all the investment you put into me.
Correct.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Do you have a person in mind or would you go out?
I'm going to post it inside, I do have a person in mind who's well-qualified, but I would invite others who think that they are qualified to put in as well.
Do you have any questions or anything, Howard?
No, go ahead.
Chief, will we see you at tomorrow night's FinCom meeting?
I can make myself available. I've got a birthday party for my, my son, but I will-
Fair enough. No, no, then that's fine, I appreciate you saying that. I'll put it, questions then, out to other FinCom members first. If anyone has questions for the chief on this?
So I have a question. When you talk about you've left money on the table, does that include, is it a guaranteed amount that you get per call or is that an estimate, like, say somebody's uninsured?
Okay, that, that's absolutely correct. There are times when you might not collect, or you're going to get a Medicare rate, depending. So, so I would say a good, a good probably estimate, because I don't want to give the wrong impression that, you know, if we bill out 180, we're going to get 180, because you're going to find that that's probably not the case. But you're probably going to get 60 to 70% of it.
And I agree, response time is very important, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no, again, response times are important, but it's just getting to the point where, and like I said, it's a safety issue, but it's a money, but what I'm saying is, in order to, in order to offset what you're putting out or what you would have to pay for that position, you can bring in revenue. It's not like you're, you see what I'm saying? And I just thought that this would, because of the pandemic and the things that are going on, we're, we're so far behind that we've got to effectively plan. And I would rather have more minds planning than, than just mine, quite honestly. Who, you know, people I trust, and that when you, when you put two minds together, you can come up with a lot of good ideas.
I'm sorry, one more question. How does the size of our fire department per population, is it, compared with other towns?
I would say that every department is in the same spot as ours. The departments that are suffering the most are departments that have our model, which is the combination model, which is call firefighters and full-time firefighters. For years, the call firefighters were the backbone of the fire department. Unfortunately, the trend is, throughout the country and the world, people just don't have the time, and you know what? They don't want to do it. They don't want to get exposed to COVID. They don't want to get exposed to things that can hurt them or their family, that's the other thing. That was the other issue we had. People did not want to go home to their family because they don't want to maybe bring something home to their family. I could totally relate to that. Or someone that might have been exposed, so they were opening hotels for first responders so they could go and be away with other first responders and not, and not, not subject their family members to getting, getting sick. But this, in talking to the administrator, I, looking at the department, the fire department and the police department, I thought that this would probably be one of the best times that we could bridge, yeah, yeah, we're going to need more people down the road, there's no doubt about that. But if we could get- doubt about that. But if we could get a very highly-trained person that can help out with the upper-level stuff too, and there's times I'm on the ambulance that I'll be on with, we know that both of us are there. We can get those calls answered and help it make it so there's not as big a hit as it would be. Thank you.
Anyone else from FinCom?
Yeah.
Jean?
I'm listening.
What's the breakdown of the full-time and the call?
Okay, we have seven full-timers plus myself. They cover seven days a week. There's usually two shifts, there's two on a shift, one, there's three on a shift. And we've kept it that way because if we had a medic that was going on vacation, we could slide one over to cover that vacation and still be covered. And that's another area where having people leave has hurt us because we don't have that flexibility. But if this person were to come onboard or this position were filled, it would, that would also be part of the plan too, is to try to help cover that. Those vacations and those times where you might get a call out for sickness or something to that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. The simple math tells me you're looking for about 86.5% increase based on what you came to us during late winter or whatnot. Somewhere around 63,000?
I'm just, I'm trying to do the math in my head.
About 63,000 ballpark. Is that in the ballpark, correct? Maybe?
I think it's going to be a little more than that.
Okay. And that's just salary we're talking about? You already have the existing ambulance?
Pardon me?
That's just salary, in other words?
Correct. Yeah, we...
You have the equipment already. We're not investing in new equipment?
Correct, correct. No, we've got two ambulances.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could answer Phil's?
Yeah.
So, it's the salary of 90,000?
Yep.
Split, 45 to the fire department and 45 to the ambulance department for budget purposes? Now, I took a very conservative estimate of how much revenue would be created in the ambulance department. You know, the chief thinks 180. I think that's probably right. That's what he would bill. It's better, and this is a page from Jean's book, it's better to really low-ball it and be better than you expected. So, I only took an additional 20,000 from the ambulance receipts into the general fund budget to help offset this additional. So, what you say 63 is really, it's like 20 from 90,000, 70 goes to buy a different...
Yeah, the numbers will all get fuzzy after a while.
Yeah, they do, but that is one position. We don't budget benefits. When somebody gets hired, we budget extra benefits in the benefit line item so they're available. If we offer to the employee, they take either the family or the individual plan, but it's not an additional. This is already an extra plan, extra five plans actually, you know, budgeted, so it's covered.
I understand. Last question, and this may be really, like, well-off, but why doesn't the private sector cover this? You were talking about leaving money on the table. Why doesn't the private ambulance services uncover all this stuff? I'm just a little lost on how that works. So, is there not, there's no private ones? No, definitely.
There are towns that are private, that have private, they're not, there are not many in the area. As a matter of fact, there are those who you, who have private, who would rather get away from it and rather have their own because it gives them the ability to have more firefighters and more trained personnel in their building, in their station. A lot of times, the privates will put out a low bid in the beginning, but upfront, you're paying for their ambulance that they put in, whether it be brand-new, and they take all the revenue. I'd rather use the, I'd rather offset the revenue, use the revenue to help the town personally. And the other thing is, I've worked the private industry. That's how I started in my career. I would say a lot of times with the ambulance services, you're not going to get a person who is, who has invested in the town and cares as much. They just go in there, do their shift, and that's it. Whereas our people in the station, they're actually working, washing the ambulances, keeping the equipment in good shape, things like that. That you're not going to, if you can get them, some services to wash the truck, you're doing a good, it's a discipline, everything. If you didn't wash your truck, we're writing you up, type thing. Exactly. So, that's what I was, so, did I answer that question?
Perfect.
And then, and then the final thing, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to mention is, and if I haven't already, but in talking to Mr. Wojcik, we talked about mirroring the police and fire with the, the chief has a lieutenant. They've had a lieutenant who helps out with a lot of that stuff in the station, and it's worked well for them. We just haven't been at that point where we've been able to do that. So, I think that this is, from my, from my position as a guy who has his eyes on the department every day, knows the in and out of the department, that's right now, if we can't put three guys on every shift, this is the best way to, best bang for your buck. Because you've got that extra layer. So, when things go along, you got, go wrong, rather, like it did in the beginning of COVID, you've got more versatility and flexibility to help solve those issues.
So, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Absolutely.
One, is it fair to say that of the 67 missed calls, some were missed because we didn't have an ambulance, not because we didn't have a body?
That's fair.
Okay.
That's fair.
Can someone give me those numbers?
Well...
I just don't know who's, I just don't know who would have those.
Well, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I just...
I don't need them tonight.
I just counted those. What I did, what I did do is have them go back and see what calls we missed during the COVID when we were covering and that we covered those calls during March, like, half of March and April. And there's about 10 calls that we covered because we had a second bus. We got it right out the door.
Sure. No, and I understand that. I just wondered, their presentation was based in part on the lost 67 calls, but I understood that some of those were because we didn't have the ambulance, which we now have.
We had ambulances. We didn't have ambulances that were reliable.
Touche.
And, you know, we don't have that now.
Second question back to math. The 90,000 line item, is this a full 90,000 into that area of what you were cutting and are now looking to add, to restore because of the numbers you just got from the state? Or is this a 45 and 45 because half goes to fire and half goes to a subset that self-funds?
Oh, no.
It's all 90?
You know how Jean does it. I mean, we just take restricted receipts account, we do a transfer at Fall Town Meeting to cover...
But this is all 90?
It's all 90.
Going back into your math. Okay. Well said. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
But just for point of reference, it is, this proposal is reflected in the spreadsheet I handed out tonight.
I understand.
So, if you didn't go forward, that 90 would go back.
I understand. Right.
Chief, how many mutual aid calls have we responded to? Is it more than 67, question?
I have it here. I just got to look back at that. Just pardon me for a second. This is, I'm trying to get the year right. So, this would be FY...
19.
19. So, that was 41 calls. We responded mutual aid elsewhere. 67, they came to us.
So, when we respond to mutual aid, we take our ambulance and send it out. And now you've got an ambulance and one person?
Correct. On a good day.
How many calls do you do in a week still?
I'm not out there a lot, but that's, that's part of the problem is not having that other body. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, I was, I was in the ambulance a few weeks ago when I was hurt, went down in the back.
They might not let you back in.
Yeah. That's the first time in a 40-year career, 30-year career, anyway. I would say the amount of times that you would see this, there's times that I go anyways to try to keep my skills sharp. But that's the whole point of trying to, trying to get this so that we're out there together, out there a lot. But there's times when I'll just, I'll have a guy hang back and I'll go do the call with somebody too to keep. But it all depends on what my schedule is and this pandemic hasn't really made it easy. I'm the emergency manager here in town too, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just pipe in. So, in the annual report, every year, the fire department's calls are itemized in the public safety section. What jumps out at me is that we ran mutual aid to Webster two times, but we took mutual aid from Webster 19 times. And I think just because the part of the town that Webster can get to, it strikes me that there was a lot of those calls are the ones that we would pick up if we had a second ambulance. Because our to and from balances with Oxbridge and Northbridge are pretty, pretty even out.
Yeah, they are.
We wouldn't lose, but we might still run to them. We might run to them more often if we're able to respond.
And I've noticed an uptick with Northbridge just in the past couple of weeks, and I'm sure it's because they're down in ambulance. Or they're just...
Busy.
They're busy. They get two, three, four calls at a whack. But, and, you know, you go mutual aid, you, you know, my back, I scratch your back, you scratch mine, they scratch ours a little more, but that's why we, you know, we don't have a problem going. And it's revenue as well. But the problem is, it leaves you vulnerable because now you, you know, you have nothing.
I hear that. I do. Yeah.
We're good on finance.
You're good on finance?
Yep. Thank you, chief.
Did we have other selectmen on the call? Anyone?
Mike, you out there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm all set. I have a question.
The world's most interesting selectman, Mr. Davis?
Founder's most interesting presentation from the fire department.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Excellent. I am good as well, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Pam has a question. I apologize. I didn't see a hand up, Pam. Sorry.
I'll wait the next time.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. You mentioned early on when the COVID started, you ended up having five people second one time. Did they all come back?
Yes.
Are they gone now?
They all came back. One of the gentlemen is very young, a young bull, and he...
He liked those.
He was, yeah, exactly. He, he had a fever for about a day and a half, then run down.
So, he had COVID? Oh. So, ran through the department? Is that what you're saying?
It ran through, yes, it did.
Okay. That's unfortunate.
Eleven, to be exact.
So, it was our worst-case scenario in the EOC.
So, I guess my question is, chief, you're looking for, you know, highly qualified people in the department. Can you not just hire or replace, if you need to replace somebody, with a highly qualified individual? I guess I'm surprised that you're heading towards management. I wonder whether or not, whether towns our size have dual management in place?
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
A chief and assistant chief, size of Douglas?
Oxbridge is an assistant, I'm sorry, a chief and a deputy?
Oxbridge is twice our size, at least. I think three times that.
Yeah, and we have 37 square miles.
Yeah.
Which is a distance, pardon me?
What does that do?
It makes it...
Does that change as far as...
It makes it harder to get places.
But it doesn't change the needs for management.
It absolutely does. It absolutely does.
Okay, so the other question I have is, are you, are you working at the Mass Fire Academy?
Yes, I am. Why?
Well, I just wonder how often that's taken you out of town? And whether or not that is adding to your burden because you're not in town enough to complete your job and so they need some help. I mean, I'm a student.
Excuse me?
Pam, if I could interject quickly.
Somebody. Okay. I didn't work.
It's okay. It's me. So, one of the reasons that we had moved forward with putting strong chiefs in place, like with our police department and with our fire department, is to actually have subject matter experts in their particular field be the ones that are managing and determining how they run their department and what's needed for them to be effective. I don't have a background in emergency management. I don't think very many other people, other than Mr. Cortez, who is a state trooper, does. And I just don't feel that it's, we hire these people, we put them into a position of leadership because we trust that they know what they're doing and that they're experts in what they're doing, and they know best as to what their department needs. I'm of the mindset that if my fire chief comes in and says, "I need an additional level of management to help me more effectively run this fire department to keep the Douglas safer," I'm inclined to believe him and say, "What can we do to support you to do that?" Much as if Nick came in and said, "Hey, I'm in need of a second lieutenant to work out in the police department to help keep Douglas's road safer." I'm tend to incline to agree with what they're doing because these are the guys that do this. They know what they're doing. So, I really don't tend to try and get into the weeds and question, you know, how do you run a fire department? Because I honestly couldn't tell you. Because I can say when I was working for Comcast, I was VP, and if somebody had no knowledge of how IT departments work and came in and started questioning me on how I did my job, I wouldn't be warm and fuzzy in receiving that.
I'd comment, and I think I'd tack right on to what the chairman said, and it's an expansion of what I said before. Public safety services, you don't work in a vacuum or inside a bubble. They're constantly changing. Different departments may have knowledge, specialized knowledge that you may not be aware of. The chief goes and he does training. He imparts his knowledge to other people in other towns and he makes their jobs, their departments safer, which there's no financial gain here in town, but I think there's a moral overall gain. More importantly, when he goes to teach, he absorbs information as well, and he learns things. And he comes back, and this is how training works at public safety, and he imparts that to the men and women of the Douglas Fire Department. And he says, "Hey, I was talking to somebody from any town FD and they have this unique way of handling a problem that we may have, and it's something we never thought of and ran up against. But let's, let's talk about this for a little while so that if we have that situation here in Douglas, I've learned a way that we can address that." I think, you know, anytime we spend in training and exposure to other departments, people in the public safety field, you can't just say, when I was in the state police, Pam, I went to the academy in 1985, okay, which is horribly in the past for some of the people listening. Think of the things that have changed in law enforcement since 1985. If you try to exist in a bubble, it just doesn't work. It's not going to work. And I think the chief taking the initiative to go impart the knowledge that he has and soak up other knowledge and bring it back here, it's worth whatever time he spends doing that.
Well, I'm with you, but how, is it weekly? 10, 20 hours a week? Well, how much, what are you putting in there?
I probably, in a four-month, in a four-month class, I'm probably there 15 times. Couple of nights, it's a four-hour class, and then I might do a weekend.
Outside of your typical workday?
Correct.
Oh, all right. That's fine. Everyone needs a side hustle, right?
Yeah.
I'm with you there.
I don't, prostitutes hustle. I don't hustle. I impart knowledge.
Well put, chief. Thank you, chief.
I add value to my students, and I get a lot of information from other chiefs from across, from across the state that I network with. And some of them I've trained, and some have trained me. And I've been there 16 years and it'll never, I'll be there long, long past Douglas.
Yeah. So, what you're saying is this side hustle, I'll call it that, you're, it's not impacting your, your current work. It's not that you're not in town where you should be. Because I remember when we hired you, you said, "I'm a chief and I will go on calls."
That's correct.
Right? So, it's not impeding that?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I would probably...
I would gladly have you look into the records of where I've been, it's all documented where I've been.
Don't take this as hostile, we're just figuring it out.
No, the gotcha one's back there. All right.
My turn, number three?
Yes.
More context.
Chief.
Yes, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Selectman Bonin, I think you'll sympathize with what I'm about to say. I played the game of baseball since I was seven years old. I learned as much about the game when I became a coach as I did after playing the game for 40 years. It made me a better player, and being a decent player made me a better coach. And I think that's what, that's the value. I think we've struck the right balance with the chief's time in and out. I've worked for three different municipalities. I have never worked with a chief that's been this active, on the EMT side especially. So, working for a bigger city or a bigger town, a lot of times, there's a fire, the chief will come to the fire, right? But to actually roll up your sleeves and get in the back of the ambulance and work with people, this chief does it, I've never seen it happen before. So I have nothing but respect for the level, the work ethic and the level of commitment. And to that end, that was why I wanted to have a little bit of time to talk about the strong chief statutes and how it works with seconds in command. The reality is this, the town of Douglas adopted the strong chief statute for fire chiefs. He can create any position he wants. He doesn't need to ask my permission, he doesn't need to ask yours. When the town adopted the strong chief statute, that's what it did for the fire chief. All we're talking about is whether or not we would fund it at a level higher than we had previously anticipated, because we think it's a good idea. I'm here to support the idea of it, because I have expectations of the department on the management side of things. I need more of Chief Vincent's time on emergency management planning. So we have a valid hazmat plan, but we need an all hazards plan. We're coming into a period of time, at some point in the future, we will have to distribute a vaccine to the people who want it. And there may be thousands of people in town. That's his job, because he's the emergency management director, not just the fire chief. So, I'd like to have all those pieces together. When we were in the midst of the pandemic response, the chief was here, interacting with emergency operations centers around the region and with the state, and coordinating with MIMA, while what was left of the fire department ran itself down the street. The one thing that Attorney Mazur advises us, as we have an impending vacancy in the police lieutenant position because of retirement, and the proposal is to create a second in command at the fire station, is that those positions are not on the list of positions that we may have a contract for. So, the two statutes are different. The strong police chief may appoint a peace officer for a term up to three years, but that's not a contract. That's, you know, it is for the term, but it doesn't lock in anything else. So no benefit may be provided that exceeds the personnel bylaw or policies of the town of Douglas for a non-union position created outside, unless it's explicitly authorized by statute. So the fire chief, the police chief may have a contract with benefits that exceed those of the bylaw, but not available for a second in command. The fire chief's strong statute is different, as I said, he can create any position he wants, subject to the appropriation of the town, and there's no term of years established in that statute, so we all know where we stand. So, we're going to try to work on these job descriptions and where we place these positions. I think, not this town meeting, next town meeting, we'll have a compensation table amendment that creates a table for these positions so that we know how they would progress. For now, we would place any assistant chief position in the fire department at a management level salary that we think would command the attention of people who would apply for the position. And I'm going to forget, but I think that's M4... Step, is it M38 or is it M48? M48. So we can't go, I'm not going to go into M5, M5 is department head, so that's not what this person's role is. And it would be right about the exact same level as the police lieutenant's salary. So, going forward, that'll be our challenge, to work with the formalities of the compensation tables. Are there any questions about that?
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
As it does to me.
No, I couldn't.
Is there anything else in the budget, then, that people want to go over or have explained? Matt? Yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Just the chair.
Just for the record, the population of Oxbridge is 14,195, so it's less than double of...
Thank you, Hal.
Thank you, Hal.
So, Matt, when we knew that the amount of money from the state was low by a 10% of, say, 40% of the government, was there a general idea that our budget would also be down by about that much? Was that kind of a general worldview, so to speak, and then you just worked out the details?
Yeah, so the scenario was that there would be a revenue reduction on the part of the state. And what we didn't want to do to the town was come into the fiscal year with six months gone by and saying, "Hey, guys, guess what? The state just cut our revenue by almost $1 million, now we're going to have to cut." And we already had six months of spending under our belt.
Right.
So the cuts would have to be that much more draconian to make up the difference and balance the budget for the end of the year. So the tact we took was, A, put off town meetings until you have better information. B, once you get that information accommodated, from the standpoint of conservatism, so we took the budget with the revenue reduction in stride, okay? So the budget we've been living on month to month, and getting approval from the state, was based upon the budget with the revenue missing, that those $920,000 not being available. So, again, the balance came out, we would have had to use free cash, a substantial amount of free cash to support operations. Typically, a really big no-no, except that you have a rainy day fund for when it's raining, and guess what? It's raining. So we were going to do that if we had to, and we handicapped it, knowing that, hey, listen, how long is this going to last? What do we get out? Two years, best scenario, for being able to sustain that level of suspending. So we would have had to cut it. Long story to answer your short question, but we were very conservative building the budget, we only added money back when we had assurances from the state on the public record that they're going to do certain things for us for local aid.
And part of the drama was the timing of when you actually get, there's a real number from the state, right?
That's correct. I mean, I, not to editorialize too much, I'm scared to death of what they're going to have to do to fix their budget at the state level. I think, by making this promise to the cities and towns, what they've done is they've really, the die is cast. It's all been pushed on the state programs. And I think what they're hoping is that either CARES Act or some other form of COVID bailout from the feds is going to get them to the finish line. Because right now, I would not want the budget director's job at the state level, that is brutal, absolutely brutal. I don't know where they're going to get the money, and they can't just will it to show up. In other communities that I'm aware of, a significant revenue source disappeared very suddenly, and they came to the table and this particular community had to find $1.8 million worth of savings to close the fiscal year with balance with only three months left. So that's not a task we wanted to try to take.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, how are you this evening?
I am well, how are you?
Good. Through you, is it possible for me to ask Mr. Wojcik a question as a point of clarification?
Feel free.
Thank you so much. First off, I just want to say thank you for the 1.5% addition to the school district. We had planned our budget based off of a 1% increase, the 1.5%, that extra half percent allows us some additional opportunities to provide resources and materials for our students, so we are grateful for that, I do appreciate it. Earlier on in your presentation, you mentioned that last year, all bargaining units, both from the municipal and the school side, came forward and in good faith, in good faith, were going to take a zero based off of the current economic status and the uncertainty that we have. You mentioned an increase potentially as one of your recommendations in COLA. Just as I sat down with school committee and our school business manager in looking forward and starting to do some planning, is that increase that you're projecting for both the municipal and the school side, or for just one side?
Well, I leave it to you and the school committee to work out what you do on your side. I wasn't going to increase the COLA, I don't want to use the word increase. I was going to restore what was planned, which was the final year of their contract for both fire and police was 1.75, which I believe we had modeled off the last two years of the teacher's contract. I know full well that you're still pending a contract right now, and the thought was you were going to do a one-year. I don't know where that leaves us on that, and how much you can do with a 1.5% bottom-line increase with your COLAs, but I guess that's why you're superintendent, and that's why the school committee is the school committee. Those are the details you'll have to wrestle to the ground, but...
You answered the question, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I do have some questions.
Okay.
So, I'm a little confused on a little bit of the math, Sir Wojcik. I think you said, and I heard the superintendent suggest, that it's a 1.5 increase for the school district.
Oh, yeah.
Right? But I guess maybe I'm looking at the wrong numbers. I see, just the document I'm looking at, oh, let's see where that came from. I think that's yours, right? For most recent...
Gene prepared that this afternoon.
All right. And I think Gene is on the call. So, I've got a set of numbers near the back, it seemed to be total education line item, and I see 1 million, I'm sorry, 15,335,651 for FY '20. And I see 15,679,664 for FY '21. This seems to me to be more than 1.5.
Because that line item includes our favorite rapidly growing account, Blackstone Valley Tech.
Okay.
And our tuition for Norfolk Aggie.
So for the Douglas portion, Douglas School System portion, that's a debt on 1.5?
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification.
Howard, you'll be pleased to know that I gave a resounding no to be...
He was on the email.
I saw the response, and the second response, and I was pleased to know, for the record.
So, I...
That was for you, Howard.
On, it was much appreciated. So, there is a line item here at the back of your August 4th letter, Board of Selectmen Finance Committee. As a result of these changes, FY '21 revised budget submission as a bottom-line surplus, a word we all love, $81,154. Then after that, it says, "I recommend a portion of that be budgeted into a line item to cover the cost of the inventory management audit." What is an inventory management audit of the school department food service program? So, that's something that's been discussed here at the Board of Selectmen, let me just quickly cover one thing. My bottom-line surplus now is $70,000.
And I did catch that rough number earlier.
Right, so I got better information on the cost of E permitting, and I got better information on the cost of telecom for civil defense.
And it's a Matthew $70,000, not a Gene $70,000, correct?
That's a really good way of saying it.
I've been around long enough now, I get it.
So somewhere between 69 and 71.
You're close enough. What is an inventory management audit?
Do you want me to address that?
No, don't.
Okay, fine.
There's discussion, and to me, the question is this, is there an inventory management system, yes or no? And if there isn't, let's implement one and move on. But, in the course of asking that question about, is there a system and how do we reconcile what's there and what's not there, it's been just about impossible to get an answer. So that's, the Board of Selectmen is doing an investigation into that, and somebody's going to have to pay for it. The attorneys were exchanging notes, then our attorney got distracted with the chairman's discussion under his comments earlier. So, we're not making progress on this yet, but we have to, it's a matter of fiscal control.
Boy, my ear perks right up. Attorneys? Multiple?
It just makes it...
One attorney in town does okay. Two attorneys have a thriving business. Why are more than, why is more than one attorney?
I'm going to punch...
This was an issue that was raised at the best.
Why is more than one attorney, more than one attorney for the town of Douglas or its departments?
Well, there's town council that's involved, that's...
Paid hourly on that, or?
He's on a retainer.
Okay.
So it's not hourly.
Okay.
And then the school department has retained services of an attorney to represent on their side.
The Douglas School Department?
That is correct.
Could somebody explain to me what's going on there? Something's missing.
There's, with your permission, that.
Why would the Douglas, are we paying the, into the budget, Mr. Fiera referenced and Mr. Wojcik said he had to account for, which I get, is the school committee got an additional line item of paying for outside counsel?
I don't know the answer to that. I was going to address generally the first part of your question.
I did, but if you're asking how they're funding it, I think you should ask them.
Well, hold on, I'm just trying to understand.
I could answer the first part of your question.
I'll run with that for the moment.
I would be reluctant, and of course, it's the chairman's decision, to release too much information. I think it's been explained on the record more than one time in this venue, that there has been difficulty obtaining any hard information as to foodstuffs purchased by the school department, the inventory, the purchasing, and things like that. And it came to light during the COVID, when the town manager or town administrator, I'm sorry, and others put together a program to help feed some of the hungry in town. Elderly that were shut in, kids that might be what we would call latchkey kids, and would have difficulty getting a hot meal, so we put together what I think would be a rather ingenious program. And we went to the school department to try to use up some of the surplus food, and this is where it began. Mr. Wojcik couldn't get any straight answers as to what was there, what we could expect to find, and I think it would be fair to say we encountered some pushback. None of this at all reflects on Superintendent Fiera, who was not an employee of the town at the time. Based on that, and further discussions in front of this board, we've decided or voted to investigate that matter, and I don't think we've done much in the way, Mr. Chairman, of having any information potted to the board on where that investigation is. So, I'm sure as heck not going to speculate, Howard, okay? But there's an open investigation that this board voted on into the status of what's going on.
To the point that the school committee felt it needed counsel, is what we think, attorneys?
I think, I echo what Matt said, I think you need to ask them that.
Well, I'm asking the town manager, town administrator at the moment, because he used the term attorneys.
Well, there are two attorneys.
I meant the town council and the council that the school committee has retained.
Okay.
But I thought...
So it does appear. That's, I'm not trying to, tonight, I'm not trying to put the school committee on the spot, I may find that in a different venue, but this is something that's here, that's a big line item. As a result of these changes, the FY '21 budget has a bottom-line surplus of $70,000. I recommend a portion of that budget into a line item. What portion?
I don't know what these audits cost. I've done some research, you know, this is kind of a specialized field, inventory management, there are different methods, blah, 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 blah. There's a limit, too. You know, it was a reasonable amount of money to spend to count, you know, chicken patties. So, the question wasn't really just what's there, it's motivating people to put a system in place so that in future, when I ask the question, what's there, we press a button, we get a report, and it's over. Right?
Okay. Is there a point where we would see the amount you would recommend be... Is there a point where we would see the amount you would recommend be spent? So, would that money be a line item for the town, let's say, Board of Selectmen or additional monies to go to the school committee to be able to implement that process?
No. So, the authority to conduct the investigation and the overall management of the audit relationship is the Board of Selectmen, no one else. It's under their authority to make sure the place is running with appropriate fiscal controls.
Are we talking about an outside auditor?
Yes.
An outside auditor.
And it would be somewhat specialized because...
Has that person been retained?
Not as of yet. Our town council...
And that's what that line item is in part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our town council has been slightly distracted with the local business in town and trying to get through that process.
Okay.
So, and as he's one guy, he can't kind of be in two places at once. So, we anticipate that once the other situation comes to a peaceful and quiet end, then we can focus back.
The other that, what we started the night with.
Correct.
Will this one also be able to come to a peaceful and quiet end? Because the last thing I want to see, if I'm not billing somebody for it, I mean, if I'm billing somebody, that's a different discussion, but two attorneys...
Brutal honesty. Brutal honesty.
I'm telling you, attorneys.
That scares you, huh?
No, it makes me excited. But it scares me as Finance Committee Chair for the town, the last thing I would want to see is the town and its budget, I don't care whether it slides down into the school committee's budget, town council, even if it's retainer, paying to go up against or with an attorney for the school committee. So, I guess I will ask that question. Is it, at the moment, a perception that that will also lead to a quiet resolution or will council on council fighting be...
It will lead...
Or occurring or continuing? I feel like there's a dark secret.
There's no dark secret. But I can say this, I can't guarantee that it will come to a peaceful resolution, but I can assure you it will come to a quick resolution.
That's a far different event, though. Okay. So, I'm trying to understand, when would we see the proposed line item itself of that event?
See, when rich has become unwound from the other situation.
But it won't be part of the warrants? It won't be part, it's not in your budget proposal? The 70,000 surplus will be going to...
I haven't put it in a line item yet. I think if I was going to put it somewhere, I'd put it with the main audit of the town, which in the budget, you'll notice, is the $23,000 to audit the whole town for the whole year.
All right.
So, I'm hoping that, I'm being a little bit facetious because I want to make the point that we can get this quickly and finish it. Count the chicken patties, for God's sake, and find out how many we use, how many we didn't use.
Fish chicks, whatever.
And put into place a management system that would cover anything that's inventoried on the school department's side, whether it's PPE or foodstuffs or any other thing.
Is it the school committee's job to, is what you're looking for, for them to develop a better system, management system, inventory management system?
That's Matt's goal. It is for them to develop a better, more efficient system.
And that would be within this budget?
Correct.
In theory, how they manage that number, the 1.5 increase.
The other part to it is, Howard, is that when we start looking at reimbursement, case in point, like when you're looking at FEMA, and we have to put in a reimbursement for it, they're asking Matt and Gene to be able to sign off on things, saying, "Is this accurate and truthful?"
I have no problem. I understand. I understand.
It kind of pushed us into the position that we're in, and our hopes is, is I'm certainly, nobody's trying to crucify anybody. I want to make sure that Matt and Gene feel comfortable signing off on every kind of fiduciary responsibility that they have and submitting that to state and local governments.
But at the moment, your anticipation is that you don't expect more lawyer on lawyer than...
I am hopeful that that is not the case. I think it's a matter of they need to come to terms and agree upon who an auditing firm would be and move forward from there.
Okay. Is school committee going to be in front of the Finance Committee tomorrow night?
Yes, they will.
Okay. All right.
They're on here tonight, and I unmuted myself, Mr. Migos. So, you'll be here tomorrow night.
Okay. Thank you, and I can continue that portion then tomorrow evening. Just to finish this for me, I'm unclear, that 70,000 surplus, roughly, that Gene will be able to get exactly when she takes it in, is that, at the moment, in your budget proposal, BOs's budget proposal, still going to the town coffers, the 70,000? There's no line item here for the audit yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we would be made aware of that in some format before it got put somewhere. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks.
You're very welcome. Are there any other questions from any of the committees?
Anyone else on FinCom? I got to tell you guys, I would entertain a motion to quit, to finish the FinCom meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you.
To quit.
I like quit.
Quit's a strong word.
Howard, they can't quit you.
Right? Right? I'm standing with a motion. I got it. Hey, what can I say? Right?
When you're good, you're good.
Right? When you're good, you're good.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have somebody speaking.
I do. It's Gene.
Gene?
Gene, yes.
Yes, Gene?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn our FinCom meeting, Gene.
I'm actually in my office.
And?
Hold on.
What is she, coming down the hallway?
We're giving two votes on the quarter clock for tonight. One is on the COLA, and the second would be on the town administrator's recommendation. So, that could be presented to the Finance Committee tomorrow.
Gene, I have nothing to do with that, ma'am. We're adjourning the FinCom portion of the meeting.
We're getting to that, Gene. We're letting Howard let his people go home.
Right.
I know, and I wanted to make sure that he was aware of the vote before he let them go home.
Your votes that I'll see the results of tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes, Gene. Thank you, Gene. All those in favor of the FinCom motion to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The FinCom is adjourned.
Howard will be here again tomorrow at 7:00, right?
Here or Zoom, virtual alternative.
Yeah, public hearing, though. So, the door will be open.
Correct. Thank you all.
Thank you, members of FinCom. Much appreciated.
Thank you for...
It always is. We like a lot of fun. We try.
Can I adjourn School Committee at 9:01? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn School Committee at 9:01. And the roll call vote? Kelly Brady, aye.
Becky Shurney, aye.
Hannah Moore, aye.
Brad, aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, School Committee.
Thank you very much.
So, are you going to be here physically?
Thank you.
I'm not sure.
Have a good evening, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. Where are we?
I think he's a doctor, isn't he?
I believe he is, yes. Four. Item number four.
Item number four. Oh, wouldn't we want to approve his recommendations on the budget, move forward with those for you?
Yeah, you got to vote like Gene wants you to.
Yeah.
So moved.
On the town administrator's recommended budget?
Yes.
I will second that body of work.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, aye. All right. And town administrator? Yeah, so we just took all your recommendations, so that covers everything that Gene was looking for, correct?
I believe so.
All right. On to item number four, where we need to open the warrant for September 12th Annual Town Meeting, impossible votes. Then we need to set a rain date of September 13th. We need to insert Sell Real Property article, impossible votes, and then close and sign the warrant with possible votes.
I move that we open the warrant for September 12th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting.
I'll amend your motion to include a rain date of Sunday, September 13th.
I think we have to vote separately on these, do we?
I think we do. We have to open it, and then we can make a rain date.
I was thinking that, but I think we have to do different motions.
Formality is good.
All right.
If you overdo it, so what?
Spoken like a law graduate.
Well, then I withdraw my misguided amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
On the misguided amendment?
No, on my original motion.
All right. Anybody want to second Dave's motion?
I sure will. Bonan?
All right.
Seconds.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, aye. All right.
Now?
Make a motion to set a rain date of September 13th, 2020 at 10:30 a.m.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Sunday at a 10:30? If it rains.
If it rains.
Very well. Sure.
All right, so you second that?
I will.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, aye. Insert Sell Real Property article and possible votes.
So moved. We already discussed that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye. U, aye.
Morris, aye. We then need to close and sign the warrant, possible votes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, aye. We then need to close and sign the warrant, possible votes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, aye.
I thought we were going to discuss Sell Real Property. That's why I thought we had to do it separately. My mistake.
Well, I think we already discussed the Sell Real Property.
I realized that right after I made the motion.
Item number five, approve junk dealer license. I really hate the term of that license, junk dealer, for Boe Prey Scrap LLC, impossible votes.
I move to approve the junk dealer license for Boe Prey, Boe Prey Scrap LLC. A motion to approve Boe Prey Scrap LLC's junk dealer application for renewal of a term ending May 1st, 2021.
Has there been any staff review of that? I just see...
Need a second first.
I'm not giving that.
All right, I'll second it, damn it.
Further discussion?
Yes.
So, I just see scrap metal, including cars. It's the first time I'm actually seeing this. Have staff looked at where this is going to be and whether or not there's environmental or...
It's already there. This is a renewal.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't heard any complaints. Let me second something.
I'll give you the second if you want a second.
I'll take it.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded by Tim, now that he's excited about it. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, aye. We are on annual appointments up for renewal. Approve Cultural Council appointment, Paul Beckwith, impossible votes, and approve Capital Improvement appointment, Benjamin Tosino, impossible votes. I'm thinking, would it make sense to put a placeholder in the other appointments that aren't currently up and move with the two that are bulleted?
You mean prolong the actual annual appointment another week?
Yeah.
Sure.
Anybody have any issues with that?
I do not.
Anybody have any issues with moving through the cultural and capital improvement appointments?
No.
As presented?
No objection.
Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, yes.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, yes. Brings us to item number seven. Sign September 1st date primary warrant and possible votes.
This is for the primary election, correct?
Yes, sir.
Go back to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the warrant as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote?
Bonan, yes.
Cortez, aye.
David, a minute. U, aye.
Morris, sure. All right. I'm going to skip over eight because there's really no update or discussion regarding the investigation of the food service program. So, that brings us to item nine, which is approved minutes and possible votes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the July 28th, 2020 minutes.
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonan, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
U, aye.
Morris, yes. Brings us to your report, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we've gone over this evening a lot of the things I've been working on over the past week or so. The August 18th meeting of the Board of Selectmen will feature that discussion on economic development, and I would encourage people to attend, to listen, to ask questions. Economic development is, by its very nature, change. Change has upside and downside at all times. It's never all one or all the other. And when you look at the map of a town, you try to find a way sometimes to accommodate significant change with very little or as little as possible impact on the people who already live there. And the properties that are being discussed, as you well know, run very close to Route 146, part of town where we have an existing sandpit operation, concrete operation, and, you know, a mill building with a paper goods factory, envelope factory on one floor, and a cannabis grow on another. And the notion of selling town property to grant access through the woods to Gilboa Street would be to minimize the impact on the people of the town by directing the traffic it would generate directly to the highway. That's the appeal to the project proponent, and it would also be the appeal on our side. But I'll leave it to others to fill in the details. I just want to make sure that people are aware that every single thing you do to change the landscape of a town has both positive and negative aspects. But this, a lot of thought and a lot of work and a lot of refinement has gone into this on Bob Manaric's part at EDC and my part as your town administrator. I tried to come up with a proposal that had significant merit that you could look at one way or the other. I would be remiss, even though I know that no one, who might still be listening, actually knows who I'm talking about. But I spent a good part of my career in the last 10 years as Economic Development Director for the city of Wunsaket, which was going through very hard times when we were there. There was significant hidden fiscal stress, and when my boss, the mayor, took office, we found out that we didn't have enough money to run the city. And we proceeded for the next four years to try to help the city recover. And the city council president at the time was Albert Brien. Well, at first term was John Ward, but then Albert Brien got a strong enough vote on the council to take over the presidency. And anybody who ever met Albert knows that he was a dyed-in-the-wool member of his party in politics and member of the state delegation from Wunsaket for many years before he came back and was a department head for different mayors and then a member of the city council. And while we could not be more different as two people, I learned to respect Mr. Brien's knowledge of the city and his passion for the people of the city and his extraordinary compassion for people who are down and out. Mr. Brien passed away unexpectedly this last week at the age of 79, and he will be sorely missed by the city and anybody who's ever served the city in any capacity. Public service is often, involves sacrifices and persistence to try to get your point of view across to people over a long period of time, try to mold the future of the community where you live. And Mr. Brien, on that level, was a great public servant. It was an honor to serve with him. I'm glad to see the budget get to the point where it's not my problem. This has been, every year, we're trying to get more and more transparent and at the same time, more efficient with the process. So I just want to encourage people to stay tuned to various fiscal notes that we generate when we make changes to the budget, the budget document itself, and ask questions as we go along. Next year, we anticipate could be difficult. But who knows at this point? One last word on where we stand with the pandemic here in town. We've gone off and on over the last couple of weeks with one case, and then it would, the case would, the quarantine period would end, and then there'd be a period of time when there'd be nobody, and then we'd get one more. Right now, we have one active case in town. I think we're up to a total of 49 since the pandemic began. As we look at events all around us, it is extraordinarily challenging for the governor of the Commonwealth to issue a travel order that applies to residents of Rhode Island, which as a border community, we know an awful lot of the traffic here in town is from Rhode Island. So just, we're going to be putting signs out and encouraging people from Rhode Island to respect that travel order and to do the best they can to stay in compliance. The state is in a more difficult position than Massachusetts. It's a summertime community. It's been very hot. You know, a lot of people go into beaches, going to all those beach parties that occur down that way. You have some students coming back from different parts of the country. So Rhode Island's positivity rate's a little bit higher than ours right now. It was high enough to trigger this action. We're not going to be asking the police department to be some sort of strange organization that hunts people down because they come across the border with a Rhode Island plate. That's not the intent. I just want people to just respect the fact that as long as we can keep it under wraps, the better it's going to be. Because if it was in reverse, it would be very difficult for Rhode Island to cope with holding on to their foothold against the virus if Massachusetts were in bad shape. So that's the last note I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wojcicki. I cannot think of any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. At this point in time, that may change by next week.
I have one.
Sure.
You know, through the excitement and frustration that Selectman Cortez showed regarding qualified immunity.
Yes.
I went back and did a little homework on that. And, you know, Dave's a pretty even-keeled guy, but you could tell that this was a little outrageous. I would like this board to weigh in to the MMA in some fashion, whether it's calling for the resignation of the executive director, whether it's us holding a press conference in front of MMA's office, indicating that, yeah, it's one thing to go up to Boston and argue for state aid in certain things that, you know, we would expect of them. I don't expect them to speak on our behalf and unilaterally undermine law and order in this town.
Can I expand upon what you said?
I'll tee it up. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We had discussed this offline, and I should have brought it up, and quite frankly, it's 9:30, and I forgot. What Selectman Bonan refers to by the MMA is the Massachusetts municipal organization, to which we pay dues as a town to represent us as one of the towns, 351 cities and towns of the Commonwealth. The MMA took it upon themselves, certainly without asking us, and from what I've been able to learn, and I think Tim's been able to learn, they didn't bother consulting a whole heck of a lot of their member towns. And what they decided to do was write a letter to the legislature in support of the police reform bill that one version of removes qualified immunity for all town employees, including the members of this board, and another version may limit that somewhat. Should that pass, that is, as I stated before with some passion, as Tim points out, that is going to be a financial problem for this town and for the other 350 communities in Massachusetts. It will change the way, I'm happy to go into as much detail as anybody wants, but not at 9:30 at night. It will change the way that suits against towns and their employees are handled, and it will change them to the detriment of this town. It doesn't make any difference whether you think the suit is good, bad, indifferent, or any of the term. It's going to make it more expensive for us to fight those suits. And the association that we pay dues to took it upon themselves, without talking to us, to back this bill. A number of towns in the Commonwealth, four that I'm aware of so far, including two in Worcester County, and one where Selectman Bonan and I share a friend on the Board of Selectmen in that town, have taken it upon themselves to notify the MMA of their displeasure, or you might even say disgust. I like your ideas about a press conference, like all of those things. To my knowledge, and perhaps Mr. Wojcicki can weigh in, the MMA has not released any kind of statement or backed down as a result of the controversy they've created. I'm certainly open to suggestion, or we can discuss either tonight or next week, what we should do about this, but I do think that we should address it. When the people you're paying dues to turn around and stab you in the back, and this was a stab in the back to this town, I think we need to address it.
Put it on, we can put it on the agenda for next week. I have no problems with that.
I didn't mean to hijack your issue.
No, I wind you up and let it go. No, seriously, I mean, the board notwithstanding, right? We're big people. We make good decisions and, but just the police itself.
Right.
Who in the right mind is actually going to police the way they currently police with the idea that every single action they do will be subject to some sort of, you know, ridiculous charge?
I understand too, anyone's feelings of police notwithstanding. You can believe what you want about police and whether their actions are generally good, bad, or indifferent. The fact of the matter is, when people sue, they sue police departments, not police officers. Police officers, as a general rule, and I can certainly testify to this, don't have enough assets to attract someone who's going to sue you. They're going to sue Officer So-and-so, and then they're going to sue the Douglas Police Department in the town of Douglas. They have what's called in the industry, rate, deep pockets. We have a fairly good-sized municipal budget. More importantly, we have liability insurance, we being the town. And that's what the people suing are looking to reach, not what Officer So-and-so may have in his savings account. You don't sue cops. You sue police departments. And that's why it's important to remember that those suits have a big effect on our, can have the potentiality to have a big effect on our bottom line.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may point out the oddness, because our property casualty insurer is Maya, which is a creature of the MMA. And so...
Imagine that.
Why they would do this to their own trust fund is, it mystifies me. I look at it primarily from the financial point of view because I'm prepared to shop the business, the property casualty piece. First of all, because I don't like the value proposition. It seems like we had a big claim, and we're going to spend the next three years paying it back. We might as well self-insure, for goodness sake.
Right.
And so it's not a good deal. And we just got to, you know, sometimes you have to rattle the cages to get people's attention, but, you know, money talks and whatever else walks. Well, our insurance premium this year is close to $400,000. So I think we have more than enough stake as a town and officials for the town to speak up and say, "Yeah, you guys didn't really think this through."
Reminded me of another thing. So through conversation, it has come to my attention that there is an anonymous donor that is willing to put thin blue line flags out there.
I can confirm that, yes.
If our illustrious fire chief would be so willing as to fly said thin blue line flags on the back of the fire apparatus to show support for, support and solidarity between emergency management departments. So, and I don't know if our police chief is on? Nick on?
I think he's out on vacation.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will bring it up with Nick later. But said anonymous donor can deliver said flags to the fire department. Attention you, chief? That's all I have.
But this will be on next week's agenda?
Yes, it will.
My understanding is those two bills are not in concert with each other. There'll be a rewrite?
There is a conference committee appointed. They have done some work. It appears from the outside looking in that the conference committee has stalled